Good morning, legislatures back in session. Before we get to, good senator from Tumuni on our bill, I'm going to recognize the good gentleman from Tumuni, I mean from Talavovo. Senator Gomitato, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Notwithstanding the House rules, I move to go back to motions, Mr. Speaker. I received additional testimonies and I would like to append them to the committee reports.
Relative to what bill?
So I'm sorry, say that one more time.
Relative to what bill?
I'm sorry, to Bill 27, sir.
Twenty-seven dash thirty-eight?
Yeah, twenty-seven dash thirty-eight.
Okay, on the motion to go back to motions. No objections, you can proceed.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Speaker. Notwithstanding the House rules, I move to append testimonies from Ms. Julia Munoz and Ms. Ariana Millard, which were submitted by my office to the Committee on Rules on May 27, 2025, to the committee report on Bill 27 dash thirty-eight as amended.
On the motion to add the testimonies, seeing hearing no objections, are there any objections? Seeing hearing none, motion carries.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Okay, we're back to second reading. Bill number eighty-eight dash thirty-eight COR, Senator Taidigu, you're recognized.
Good morning, Mr. Speaker. I hope everybody had a good night's sleep. We all definitely deserved it considering the long day we had and it's anticipated we do the same today. So strap in, get your food ready, who's watching this morning? It's gonna be a long day. Thank you, Mr. Speaker, for recognizing me and again, good morning to my colleagues and those who are listening. I move to place Bill eighty-eight dash thirty-eight COR as amended by the Committee on Economic Investment, Military Buildup, Regional Relations, Technology, Regulatory Affairs, Justice, Election and Retirement, and introduced by myself along with Senator Sabina Perez, Senator Theresa Lahey, Senator Chris Barnett, Senator Shelley Calvo and Vice Speaker Tony Ada, which is an act to repeal and reenact Chapter 25, Title 16 Guam Code annotated relative to assessing the taxation of vehicle title transfers on the Bill of Sale only and streamlining vehicle ownership transfers into the third reading file and I would like to speak on that bill.
You can proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Bill number eighty-eight dash thirty-three-eight is a measure that seeks to bring long overdue fairness, clarity and modernization to how we assess vehicle title transfers taxes on Guam. Under the current practice, the Department of Motor Vehicle relies on the Kelly Blue Book estimates to calculate taxes, which estimates to calculate taxes during a title transfer. But the Kelly Blue Book was never intended to be gospel. It's a reference tool, not a one-size-fits-all authority. In fact, many jurisdictions across the country already base vehicle taxes on the actual sale price and use KBB values only at a point of reference for verification purposes, not as a default assessment. The problem here on Guam is that the KBB values do not accurately reflect the realities of our vehicle conditions. Our cars are exposed to unique environment challenges, constant salt air, rough terrain, high mileage and prolonged use, which all contribute to much lower market value than KBB typically estimates. The result? Thousands of residents are being unfairly taxed based on inflated vehicle values that don't match what they actually are paid. A resident who purchased a 2008 vehicle for $2,000 may still be taxed as if the car was worth $4,500 or more. This practice hits working class families the hardest, families who are simply trying to afford sale and reliability transportation. What about families transferring their old cars to their children? Many of us gone into that situations where we got a hand-me-down from a parent. And sometimes that hand-me-down is either gifted or your parent says, okay, I'll sell it to you for a hundred bucks. But however, when you go to the motor vehicle to transfer the name over to your child, they will charge you a Kelly Blue Book value that is almost estimated at 10 to 20 times higher than what your your parent wants to give it to you for. So the Bill of Sale is justifying because people, especially in this situation, people are not selling it to make a profit. So why is the government of Guam making a profit? Doesn't make sense. So the policy acknowledged that individuals transferring vehicles at no cost, as mentioned, to the new owner are not profiting from this transaction. Therefore, government should not impose additional taxes on such transfers. Aside from the standard $25 fee, no further payments should be required. Bill eighty-eight seeks to correct this by requiring taxes to be based on the Bill of Sale. And if you decide to give your child or your relative to someone a vehicle for $10, then that's what you should be taxed on, not what a Kelly Blue Book estimates a value for. There is no profit there. The actual price agreed upon between the buyer and the seller, that's what you should be taxed on. It's common sense solution that promotes fairness, consistency and transparency in the progress. It also improves efficiency at the DMV and reduces confusion for our people. Those who are making these transfers at DMV are not appraisers. And that's what was mentioned during the public hearing, that they cannot be appraisers. Beyond taxation fairness, the legislature plays a critical role in addressing another serious issue facing our island, the rise of junk and abandoned vehicles. From FY 2018 to FY 22, over 5,000 abandoned vehicles were removed, costing $4 million to be to be removed. Already this fiscal year, over 1,300 more have been removed, costing the government $780,000 additionally. And the numbers are staggering. My encouraging legitimate and timely title transfer, Bill eighty-eight strengthens ownership accountability, helping us trace responsibility for abandoned vehicles, support enforcement and coordinate cleanup efforts more efficiently. I want to thank my co-sponsors, Senator Perez, Theresa Lahey, Barnett, Calvo and Vice Speaker for standing behind this effort. And I urge the rest of this body to support this measure for the benefits of the people and the future of our island. And I thank you, Mr. Speaker, for also attending the market meeting for this for this bill and providing your input and insight to ensure a fairness amongst our people of Guam, especially when it comes to taxation. Thank you, Madam, Mr. Chair, Mr. Speaker.
Boy, you're greeting me every time.
I know, I've named three different people in you right now. Yesterday was just two, now I've called you three different people, so. But at this time, Mr. Speaker, I look forward to my colleagues, any input they can provide, thank you.
Thank you very much, okay, on the bill, on the bill. Good senator from Talavovo, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, for the opportunity this morning to offer brief comments in support of the purpose behind Bill eighty-eight, recognizing that this bill repeals and replaces the vehicle transfer tax statute with the intention of streamlining the vehicle transfer process by substituting the requirement for the Kelly Blue Book valuations with the amount that are stated on the Bill of Sale. This proposal is an idea, Mr. Speaker, worth considering. Mr. Speaker, if we have a proposal that will help address the longstanding issue of abandoned vehicles, then I think we should get on board and support that effort. The issue of abandoned vehicles is one of those big elephants in the room, if you will, in terms of tourism recovery. Many of us, we engage our friends, the members of the Mayor's Council of Guam. Each of the mayors have told me since I got in, since I sworn in, that that particular, this particular issue hampers their ability to fix the Guam experience in their respective village. Next to uninsured and unregistered vehicles on the road, uncontrolled street, dog population and litter along many of our roadways, abandoned vehicles remain a public nuisance. A problem if not properly addressed will continue to impact the quality of life in Guam and our image in the eyes of the very few tourists that are actually visiting our island at this time and those military men and women who are stationed here and their dependents. Mr. Speaker, I offer these brief comments with the understanding that more policies like Bill eighty-eight should be put on the table for consideration so that we as a community can take another step forward in our broader effort to clean up our island and support the safety and health of our guests and all who call Guam home. Thank you, Mr. Speaker, for the time this morning.
You're very welcome, thank you very much, Senator. On the bill, on the bill, any senator wishing to speak on the bill. General Lady from Berlada, you recognize?
Sidus Mase, Speaker. And half a day in Buenos, everyone. Today, I rise in strong support of the amended version of Bill number eighty-eight dash thirty-eight COR. This measure addresses a longstanding issue in our in our vehicle taxation system by aligning the transfer tax with the actual price paid for the vehicle as documented in an authorized Bill of Sale. For too long, residents have been required to pay taxes based on valuation guides that often do not reflect the condition or true market value of vehicles sold in our island. This amended bill removes unnecessary administrative layers while preserving the core reform, ensuring that the tax imposed during a title transfer reflects the real transaction between buyer and seller. By streamlining this process, we provide much needed relief to individuals and families who are simply trying to stay mobile or manage their personal finances under tight budgets. This change is especially meaningful for residents who may be selling older or damaged vehicles, often during periods of hardship. It removes unfair burden of inflated tax assessments and it restores a basic level of equity in how the government administers its process. While the bill no longer includes additional sections related to appeals and rulemaking, it remains an important step towards fairness, transparency and responsiveness in public policy. I commend the bill sponsor for her efforts and the committee for recognizing the urgency of this reform and I urge my colleagues to support its passage. I'm also thankful for the author's invitation for me to co-sponsor the bill. Thank you so much, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator. On the bill, on the bill, are there any other senators willing, wishing to provide? On the bill? Good senator from Gigo, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. You know, as I was reading the bill, I can understand the bill to a certain extent, but I'm concerned as a former revenue and tax employee, I'm concerned more of the taxes issue. For example, you were to sell me a vehicle for a dollar and then next month I, or you know, several months later, I rebuild the vehicle, I sell it for $10,000. How do we catch that? There's no system in place to catch it today, unless it's revealed later that, hey, I sold it for $10,000, okay. How do I pay now for the taxes gain, the money gain? And how do we work that system out to make sure it's caught on the income tax side? You know, you, we're talking simply about going down the price and saying, you got it for a dollar, you're only gonna pay a dollar when actually the true value? And if we're concerned about the Blue Book value, maybe we need to tell revenue tax you should go to the lowest value, not the medium, not the high. Because on many occasions, you're gonna find the Blue Book, they don't have just one value. You got the lowest one there that's almost rock bottom. And if that's the case, we need to figure out a way how we can work that into tax system so that revenue and tax is ready to counter whatever happens out there in the market because if we're gonna start going with the value of, whatever you claim to be the value and whatever you write in the Bill of Sale, hmm, people be selling vehicles left to right for a dollar, $2, the value is really 10,000 or 20,000, because even anti-cars. If you go to the States right now, you can probably buy an anti-car that's 2,500, under 5,000, bring it back to Guam, rebuild it, value is maybe now 50,000. And I'm only concerned about that because why? You'd only follow the Bill of Sale. You would never capture what the true value is. But otherwise, I'm comfortable to a certain extent with the bill, but not fully in full support. I'm I'm almost there, but unless we fix something on the taxes, that's what I'm concerned about. And I don't know if I need to ask you, but you can comment, the author will comment about it, but go for it.
Are you willing to comment?
Absolutely, Mr. Chair. I thank the the Senator for the question and I do understand his concern because this was debated during, especially during the market meeting. The point is, the individual who's selling the vehicle, if it's for a dollar, is not making a profit. They're selling it to someone else for a dollar. And if that individual and the the name is transferred over to the the new owner for $1, now if that new owner wants to take that vehicle and sell it for 10,000 somewhere else, well, it's got to be transferred to that new owner if you're gonna sell it. And that's where the tax can be captured. We're talking about a fairness of of what you're selling a vehicle for. And that's what you should be taxed on and what you sell it for. If you want to give it away for free or, you know, sometimes people want to donate to nonprofit organizations, we had brought that up. And what happens if you wanted to give a nonprofit and you put a dollar value and put it into that name, then you're not making a profit. So why should the government be taxing you as an individual if you're not making anything but a dollar? There's already a $25 fee automatically and there's still that taxation that we left there in the event that somebody, you know, I mean, for a dollar, it's what, 25 cents or something from there? But the whole purpose is that you're taxing individuals based on any kind of profit they make or what they sell it for, not a Kelly Blue Book value. And it has come into situations where there is three levels of Kelly Blue Book. There's the high, the middle and the fair, three. And then they'll say, okay, well, well, my car's not in good condition, so can you get, what's the lowest you can give me? Well, we can give you fair, but I don't even have an engine in my car. Can the Kelly Blue Book assess that with no engine? Or the bumper is gone or the air con's broke or there's no backseat? It can't assess it. So we're looking at a true value of a transaction made between two individuals and that's what the government of Guam should tax.
Answer your questions, Senator.
No, that didn't answer my question, but I understand where she's coming from.
Okay. Anything more? Senator, Senator Agustin, anything more? Okay.
No, just, I'll just wait until it ends and I'll go over the the bill again. And like I said, I'm from revenue, I was formerly from revenue and tax as a tax person. So I'm familiar with taxes. But when you start dealing with the vehicle and then you talk about income, that's two different areas, you know? You can't kid me on that one. You can talk all you want about appraisal value, but that doesn't work that way.
Thank you. Any other senator wishing to speak on the bill? Good senator from Berlada, you recognize? And then I'll get to you, ranking member.
I'm sorry, I'm talking to me. Oh, thank you, thank you, Mr. Speaker. And just to answer the, I can put some information regarding the the previous question. You know, what happens if, you know, you sell the vehicle for to one person for a dollar and then that person turns around and sells it for 10,000? Well, that's that's two transactions. So you're gonna be taxed, the the first transaction's gonna be taxed for whatever amount and then the second transaction will be taxed for that amount. So it doesn't affect that at all. But in regard to this bill, I rise in full support of this bill and I thank the the author for allowing me to co-sponsor. In fact, we worked together on this bill. I then, I know she was focused on the taxation part. I was focused more on the environmental aspect because I knew from many roundtables that this is one of the issues that the the mayor's experience and the police officers experience when it comes to removal of abandoned vehicles. And because it's pretty common here where vehicles are transferred without a title transfer. And so it's very difficult to track down the owner and therefore take the vehicle off the streets. And so I think this definitely streamlines that process. And I also like the fact that the bill has changed to to monitor if this is effective. So I think that was really good, a good call on the the committee to see the effect this has because I know during the public hearing, one of the statements made was that the $1,000 fine or violation for those owners that leave their vehicles on public easements will be enough to deter abandoning a vehicle. But I think there's a lot of policies that can work to prevent that from happening, you know, and this is a a common sense measure, I believe, that would prevent that from happening to encourage or lower the the barriers to transfer titles being registered at the DRT and therefore finding the owner sooner. So I look forward to the support of my colleagues on this bill. I think what the sponsor said as far as streamlining the process and justifying the tax based on the the Bill of Sale was very well said. And I know, you know, personally, you know, within families, we give away cars to our siblings, you know, we don't expect money from it. It's part of our familial obligations, I feel. But yeah, it just makes sense culturally, I think, too. So thank you for this opportunity.
You're very welcome. Any other senator wishing to speak on the bill? Ranking member, you recognize? Good lady from Pago Bay, ma'am, ranking, how are you? Good morning.
Manana Sidus, Mr. Speaker and to my colleagues and to the listening audience. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak on this measure, Bill number eighty-eight dash thirty-eight COR as amended by the committee. Of course, the who, what, why, when on the on this measure is for residents selling or buying vehicles. The what to this measure decreases the cost to legally transfer the title of a vehicle from one party to another. And the why to this is the attacks, the tax imposed on vehicle ownership transfers is based on on the, if I'm not mistaken, the vehicle's condition and actual sell amount versus the Kelly Blue Book. I I literally think that this measure is a good measure. I I did have an inquiry as stated by the previous speaker from from Gigo. And and I understand, based on the answer that was given by the author, that that the 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 transfer will be upon the Bill of Sale from one buyer, I mean, from the seller to the buyer. So I don't think that 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 there would be any revenues lost from that. And I think that the provisions and the tax rate that it's included in Section 2 of this measure covers that. You know, the tax rate transfer for the vehicle shall be $5 plus a two and a half percent of the value stated in the Bill of Sale, which would be the the amount. I did, though, have a question and I just, just a verification, Mr. Speaker, if I may, on the reviewing and the reporting requirements as stated here. It says, "The Guam Department of Revenue and Taxation shall review the effectiveness of the chapter to include total taxes collected under this chapter and the recommendations for any necessary amendments to improve this act shall be included in the annual report each calendar year, which shall be submitted to the legislature 180 days after the end of each calendar year." And I wanted to ask the author if if those reporting requirements have been done on a yearly basis and what are the numbers that we're looking at? And has this been a positive?
Would the author you to the question?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. At this point, no, I don't have those numbers. I know that there will be some. I know that there will be some adjustments being made. That's why that was incorporated into the bill, in order to see what we're either gaining or losing. And I wanted to incorporate, too, you know, also the viability of data on abandoned vehicles as well. So hopefully, as we move forward, we can look at requiring that, too, so to see how it goes hand in hand, how it addresses the concerns of abandoned vehicles. So at this point, no, I don't. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I truly appreciate the answer to my inquiry and making sure that the provision is there. So, you know, we always say, if you want to do anything, data, 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 right? Compiled data will literally get you from point A to point B, C, and all the way up to Z. And I think with the provisions to include the reporting requirements and literally getting an actual amount of how many cars are here, what's being transferred, what's being utilized, and maybe even in the future, looking at even putting more penalties for those abandoned vehicles that are stuck on our road sites in the different villages. It should not be the responsibility, Mr. Speaker, of the mayors to get rid of these abandoned vehicles. There should already be a process in place, the same way we work with some other stuff like batteries and tires and things like that. And I think sometimes you literally need to put enforcements and add teeth to the provisions that we update and amend. So in this effort, I think that this is a fair bill, a very good measure, and I want to say that I will support it. Jesus Massey for giving me the opportunity to speak on this measure. Sinamasi.
Thank you very much. Any other senator wishing to provide comment on this bill? Any other senator, vice?
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I stand in rising support of Bill 88-38-COR and commend the author for and the co-sponsors, actually, to, for this effort, to be able to try to uncomplicate what is actually a very complicated measure, you know, addressing some of the concerns from the good senator from GIGO. You know, I had the privilege of being able to work with not just the author, but the chairwoman of the committee in the markup hearing held for this bill. And there was a lot of back and forth as to how it's going to, the valuations were going to be determined. And recognizing, too, that there are some, I guess, anomalies and some issues, some concerns with regard to vehicle conditions in our type of climate, our type of weather, as compared to what is recognized in Kelley Blue Book. Mr. Speaker, I'm sure you can recognize that, you know, even our travels when we go back to continental United States, you've got vehicles that are over 20 years old, 30 years old, that are in pristine condition. And some of them in the pristine condition have never been touched for over 50 years. But you have that same vehicle in our climate, and you'd be lucky, you'd be the last three because of the heat, the humidity, the ultraviolet rays and whatnot. You know, from an insurance standpoint, one of the things that we found that actually complicates the whole matter is, as the vehicles age here on Guam and in the insurance industry, it loses more value than what you find in the Blue Book, even if your car is running well. I venture to say, ask any of the colleagues who forgot the experience, try taking your 20-year-old, your 15-year, 20-year-old car to get insurance for it. You don't have a lien on it, all you want is just liability. Try taking your car there, and a lot of times, unfortunately, because of the way insurance industry works, you may not even be, the coverage may not even be available. More so if your car was in pristine condition. Because of the age, it won't be, it may not be available for or eligible for coverage. It's kind of interesting. So what this bill basically provides is, while there's concern about the taxes that's going to be gained, it's, the taxes should be built on the sale of the car. How many times have we gone to the store and we went and we, okay, we actually look at the 40, 50, 60, 75% off rack, okay? Regular price, $120 on sale for 40. What is the tax on that? It's on the 40, not the 120. It's what the seller decides to sell the product for. Same thing as vehicle. What the seller decides to sell the vehicle for is what should be taxed. If then that buyer now becomes a seller down the road and sells it for much more, then that's going to be taxed. So we're not losing it. It's based on that. So I see the fairness in this. I also see the complications in it. So I appreciate that what was placed in the bill is a couple provisions that you can actually find in Page 7, Subsection 25107, where it says Revenue and Tax will conduct a review of the effectiveness of this chapter, of this new act, and provide recommendations for any necessary amendments to approve it. So there is that measure to be able to not only test it, okay, but see the effectiveness of it, and then to provide the recommendations. It's not a slop gap or set in stone type thing. It provides that. And that's what also gives me comfort in this bill. So I hope that helps to allay and address some of the concerns that was brought up with regard to the bill. And as such, I stand in support of the bill, and I urge my colleagues to do the same. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you. Any of our other colleagues who'd like to speak on the measure? Senator Tagui, you're recognized for your closing.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. You know, I couldn't say it even better on the analogy of what our good speaker mentioned about the taxation section. If you're going into a store and it's on sale, then that's the taxes you pay. So it was a great analogy, and I thank him for that. Mr. Speaker and colleagues, you know, I understand some other concerns that were brought up during the public hearing, and I just wanted to address them. Now, I understand some concerns have been raised about the potential of, for fraud if we, if the transaction to a Bill of Sale for the system. And I wanted to be clear that concerns is valid, but it's not new, nor is it unique to Guam. Even under circum, under current systems, individuals can falsify documents. The use of Kelley Book values have not eliminated fraud. What it has done, however, is unfairly penalize honest residents by taxing them on inflated, inaccurate vehicle values. Bill Number 88 does not eliminate oversight. In fact, it allows for more targeted enforcement. Guam law already makes it a crime to knowingly falsify tax documents, and this bill does nothing to change that. If anything, it invites us to strengthen and safeguard through notarization, spot audits, and cross-checks, just like other jurisdictions have done successfully. What we can do is continue pushing thousands of honest taxpayers out of the fear that a few might try to cheat the system. Fairness must be the standard, not suspicion. In the end, this is about doing what's right, ensuring our residents are taxed based on what they actually paid, not what website estimates from another market. It's about fixing a system that doesn't work for Guam and making it more accountable, more just, and more effective. At this time, Mr. Speaker, I would like to make a motion to include co-sponsors to the legislation. At this time, I actually did speak to everybody who's already a co-sponsor on this, but those who are not, I'd like to add everyone who is here today to be a co-sponsor. If you give me one minute.
One minute recess.
I mean, yes, if I may.
Senator Tagui, we're back. Senator Tagui, you're recognized.
Thank you. I'd like to have everyone here who's here this morning to be a co-sponsor on the legislation. So the motion is to allow those additional co-sponsors.
There's a motion to have all senators to be a co-sponsor on Bill 88-38. Any objections? No objections?
Okay. I also have another motion, Mr. Speaker. And this motion is basically to have legal make any technical corrections in the legislation. If you notice, Mr. Speaker, there's a section here where on Page 5, 25180, 25189, 25110, these are actually, should be crossed out. And they are crossed out in the legislation. It's just a technical error. And ask that legal make any technical corrections to comply with the legislation.
There's a motion to have legal make technical corrections on Bill 88-38. Any objections? No objections?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. And at this time, I thank my colleagues again for their comments that they made and their support for the legislation. I motion to place Bill 88-38-COR into the voting file.
There's a motion to move 88-38 to the voting file. Any objections? None?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
You're welcome. Thank you. Gentleman from Berlada, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Speaker, I move to place Bill Number 66-38-COR as amended by the Committee on Public Safety, Emergency Management, and the Guam National Guard introduced by myself, Frank F. Blas, Jr., which is an act to add a new subsection 65121 to Division 3, Chapter 65, Title 10 Guam Code annotated relative to codifying the Guam Comprehensive Emergency Management Plan, the GCEMP, and requiring an annual review of the next size of the plan. I'd like to move into the third reading. I'd like the opportunity to speak to it.
You can speak on.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. You know, Mr. Speaker, just for, as you didn't know, I was one time served as the Homeland Security Advisor for Guam. And in the days that I served, that was the very first days of what we now know as the homeland security. And there was a process of which trying to, recognizing the failures that we had in the 9/11 attacks and any terrorist attacks that we were having, to include the failures that we constantly and consistently encountered with other man-made or natural disasters, there was an effort to be able to put out together a comprehensive emergency management plan based on jurisdictions. And so that plan was supposed to be put together that would address and identify all the different components necessary to be able to effectively respond and recover from a disaster. But then it also addressed those areas that we needed for preparedness. And in that was the requirement, for lack of a better term, for the funding that we were receiving and we will continue to receive to put together a mass emergency management To be able to satisfy those requirements, as well as to satisfy all those requirements necessary to be eligible for future grants, for future funding, for future disaster aid, there had to be this plan to put in place. I want to thank you, Mr. Speaker, you know, when we first did the first iteration and the many subsequent iterations, up to a certain point in time, of actually participating and being able to put this plan together. Okay? As grotesque as it is, just so they understand, you were helped to put together our mass casualty plan and what we were going to do with our cadavers. And recognizing the serious shortfall that we had in being able to deal with this. And if you can recall, we did this on a very, very, very frequent and regular basis, and it was necessary so we can catch up with the times that we had. Unfortunately, after our departure, and many years later, despite the requirement for an annual review and exercise of components of the plan, it dropped. It didn't happen. And I don't want to go through the whole thing of what we're just currently experiencing with Office of Civil Defense, the Department of Guam Homeland Security, that is all over the news today. Okay? Of, let's, come down to millions of dollars lost and possibly having to pay millions of dollars back because of the absence of a plan and the absence of exercising and adhering to a plan. So what this bill provides is that this plan, this emergency, comprehensive emergency management plan, is a necessity. It's going to be necessary. And it provides that not only will this plan be reviewed regularly, as a matter of fact, annually, that components of the plan will be tested and recommendations made as a result of that test to be able to fix the plan as we move along, that the plan will be reviewed and approved by the governor. And as a courtesy, providing that, a copy of that plan to whichever agent, whichever committee has oversight charge on emergency management on Guam. So that's what this provides. I want also that this bill is similar to a bill that was introduced in previous legislature. And when it was introduced, we had emergency management officials from the administration basically come in and say, it's not necessary. It's not necessary. We don't need it. Then the sky fell, and everything blew up. And then what was their response when we had the public hearing for this bill on the 38th? Oh, this is definitely needed. It's definitely needed. Well, you know what? Fool me once, shame on me. Shame on me. Fool me twice, shame on me. Something like that. Let's put it this way, we're not going to get fooled a third time. Okay? So that's what this bill is for. Before we open it up, I want to, for clarity purposes, there are two very miniscule amendments, the corrections that I want to make on the bill. The clerk is already working on it. I would like to be able to proffer it. It actually doesn't necessarily need to cut down trees. The first area that I'd like to be able to amend is found on Page 3, line, starting on Line 4. The words attached hereto as the Guam Comprehensive Emergency Management Plan Exhibit A, that language there... That language there, those words there, just to delete that. The reason why it was initially there was for the purposes of discussion when the bill was first proposed, so that we have an idea as to what the plan is. The plan itself, ladies and gentlemen, colleagues, is basically over 100 pages long. And if you want to attach it as Attachment A, it's really not necessary for the purposes of the bill. So I just want to be able to remove that language there, to delete that, those words there. Again, line, page three, line four, "Attached hereto as the Guam Comprehensive Emergency Management Plan" in parentheses, Exhibit A.
So there's a motion to delete, "Attached hereto the Guam Comprehensive Plan Exhibit A" from the bill. Any objections?
Just a comment, Speaker. Is it possible that once the amendment is approved that we just be sent something so we can see it? As it's done, you know, not just a...
Absolutely. That's why.
We don't have to cut down no tree. Just send it to the system, digitize. It is actually in the report, get recognized. It's just that, for the purposes of the bill, it's not necessary. No objections? Good. Thank you.
No objections? Senator Flores, Paris.
Yeah, I too would like to see the Exhibit A. So how would we access that?
I can answer that question. Actually, just when it's back up, if it is back up, you should be able, it is required to be online under the Guam Homeland Security Office of Civil Defense. And it's on, it's in the committee report. Okay?
Sir, I just, you know, I support the bill. I just think that, you know, it'd be great to have that, whatever the most updated plan is.
Most updated, that's 2016. That's the problem.
Okay. Yeah, and just so, maybe for ease of access, I think that would be great to have. So I appreciate any efforts you can do to provide access to that information. Thank you.
And to answer your question, two places. It is in the committee report and it is online. And the website.
And the amendment is currently on the drive. So you can go to the drive and look at the amendment that deletes the words "attached hereto" the Guam Comprehensive Plan Exhibit A from the bill. Did you get it, Senator?
It'll be on the drive after approval, correct? I mean, you're not attached to anything yet. That's premature.
No, no. The amendment is currently on the drive. So you can review it.
Okay, I'll be looking for it. I'm looking at the whole file. Okay? We're good.
Any objections? No objections?
Thank you. The second amendment, Mr. Speaker, is actually found on line, page four, line 16. And it's the words, we delete the words "attached hereto" as Exhibit A of this act. It just refers to the same thing.
And that is also on the drive that was attached to the amendment that was made.
On page four, line 16.
On page four, line 16. Any objections? No objections?
Thank you very much, Speaker. I look forward to any comments.
Thank you. Senator Guptata, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I support, I rise in support of Bill 66-38. It seemed like it was yesterday, but one of the first iterations of what is now the Guam Comprehensive Emergency Management Plan, the retiring Speaker and I had a part in writing back in 2004. It had much to do with the time when the government of Guam became compliant with the National Incident Management System with that particular plan 21 years ago. The NIMS, as it's called, replaced the incident command system that had been in place and had guided first responders islandwide through many an emergency response in the decade-plus previous. That first writing of the plan led to its pendulum at test during Top Officials Four, or what is known as Top Off Four, in October of 2007. In 2008, there was a group of us that talked about the good and the bad of the national level exercise then. It led to what we have seen in 2013 and, for the most part, 16, with updates to what it is and has been, the Guam Comprehensive Emergency Response Plan. Mr. Speaker, Bill 66 is mandating something pretty straightforward. It codifies the plan and requires an annual review and exercise of the plan. Additionally, Mr. Speaker, any amendments to the Guam Emergency or Comprehensive Emergency Management Plan shall not require legislative approval, provided that any changes to the plan must be approved by the governor. And a copy of the document, as amended, shall be submitted to the Speaker of the Lhiahsetur in Guam within 30 days following its approval to ensure that the latest version of that plan is applied and that it is made available to members of the public in a timely manner. A copy of the updated plan, as amended from time to time, shall be provided to the compiler of laws for publication on its website. So there's going to be a lot of places where this community can find this respective plan. We are so very close to what will be the start of the 2025 Pacific storm season. While there is not much more activity as anticipated by the National Weather Service, this coming season is in line with what we have seen over the last 100 years. Three named tropical storms and two typhoons in our latitude in the next year. Timing is everything, Mr. Speaker. And I know that you and many of our incumbent senators, especially those of our party, have been asking for this and other measures to keep our branch close to the happenings of our emergency management agencies. Bill 66 is one solution to keep our emergency management planning close. The current National Response Framework describes ways to improve coordination and response structures to build preparedness for catastrophic events. Bill 66 would, in fact, test our plan as part of the National Response Framework. Very necessary, very modern, and of course, updated. And I would like to thank the author for his work on the measure. And I would ask the author at this time if I could be added as a co-author to Bill 66-38 at this time. Thank you, Mr. Speaker, for the time.
Sisus Maasi, Senator Guptata. This time, I recognize the Vice Speaker. Vice Speaker Ada, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I stand in full support of Bill 66-38-COR. You know, as the author had mentioned that years ago, that we got together, not just government agencies, but many in the private sector have gotten together to build this comprehensive plan to ensure that should an emergency happen, that we were all on the same page and every department and agency and private sector individuals were all up to date and knew what to do. We had this plan together. We were at the hotel where we had breakout sessions. We came back as part of the mass casualty group. We gave our input and everything was solidified come the pandemic. Not a single page of that plan was put into effect. We were starting from ground zero all over again. I can't even recall how many meetings I had at Civil Defense trying to find out our capabilities in the mass casualty side of what we can and cannot do, something that we have discussed previously and solidified. We had to go right back to Civil Defense and reiterate what we can and cannot do. Not once, not twice, but three times. And even with our input, it still wasn't enough. We did not get the assistance that we needed to ensure that what we were doing and how we were doing things can continue. Because when you think about it, we were actually perhaps the most instrumental industry to assist the hospital. Because remains were... They were just unindated with the remains at the hospital that they could not handle. And we had to do what we can to ensure that they were still able to process and release human remains from the hospital. So this is very important because when we think about emergency management, we're not just thinking about government agencies. This is the private sector that comes together that ensures the government agencies can function the way they do with the assistance of the private industry. And if we don't continuously update this plan and we don't continuously do what we can to ensure that where help is needed, that we address those issues on an annual basis rather than waiting for something to happen. So it just, it's very important that we continue to move forward. It's important that we update annually. It's important that we bring the people together because in the end, how this plan is effectuated and how it's is going to make the world a difference of how our island can move. So with that, I fully support this measure. And I thank the author of this bill for thinking and knowing what we've been through in the past, how we can make things better for a safer future. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Sisus Maasi, Vice Speaker Ada. You and others were definitely frontliners during that time. So you speak from experience, for sure. Senator Tina Muny-Barnes, you're recognized.
Sisus Maasi. Mr. Speaker, for giving me the opportunity to speak on this measure, Bill 66-38-COR, as authored by the good Speaker from Baragada. I personally want to say that I support this bill. And I must say that, you know, we always say it. It's been said in this body. We shouldn't have to legislate common sense. But ay fam la ko. There are times when we have to require it so the work gets done. When I look at this measure from the good Speaker, I look at why we're doing it. I look at the findings and the intent. In 2004, the government, through the Homeland Security Office of Civil established this Guam's Comprehensive Emergency Management Plan as a guide to responding to all emergencies that happen here and all catastrophic, whether it be major or minor disasters, right? And the plan back then, it was updated from 2004, updated in 2016. And despite it having a provision that called for the annual formal review and exercise, neither have occurred since. And that's why that ay de fam la ko, nine years later, and we're still here. More than half of the government of Guam agencies in 2023 had no continuity of operation plan or an updated continuity or commercial plan. And with the absence of these plans, it was easy to surmise that the emergency management plans have not been regularly reviewed, exercised, or updated. You know, Mr. Speaker, goes on to say why we need a plan and why we need to be ready. We all know here in this body that we become typhoon experts, right? Typhoon pros into mitigating, mediating, and cleaning up after disasters. But when our own government of Guam agency, which is the responsibility for the government to provide for the health, the safety, and the education of our community. And this is literally an important, critical ingredient to that aspect. And if we, as a government entity, do not have it in place, there's something wrong with us. We know that when things are happening, disasters, we already know where we need to meet, how do we, where we need to go. But if the designees are going to a place and there's no update or there's no procedures in place, where do we go from there? Nine years later, Mr. Speaker, and we're still at it. So this is why the good Speaker from Baragada, our Speaker for the 38 had to do this plan. And this time, it's to require... Mr. Speaker, it's sad that we have to do this. But it's also a reminder to our community that we have our obligations and responsibilities. And this august body is standing firm to saying, if you need to do your job, well, you better do it now. The only thing I wanted to ask, Mr. Speaker, if I can inquire to the good author, was the enforcement or the provision for enforcing teeth into this? What happens if it doesn't still get followed through and the submission after the governor approves after the 90 days? What happens if it doesn't go through? Where do we go from there?
What happens if it doesn't? I'll answer that question. And I'll be very blunt. What happens if we don't do this? People could die. People could die. And so I think that just the recognition that the burden is on your shoulder should be able to move you to be able to do this and recognize the responsibility. And that it is inherent upon, you know, we're not going to sit here and manage what the executive branch should do in cases where it's management, it's people that is charged with this fail to do their job. So you have a choice. Do it. Or if you don't do it, lose your job because people could die. That's the crux of it. Thank you.
Sisus Maasi, Mr. Speaker.
You know me, Mr. Speaker. And that's what I don't want to happen. That's why we have to step up, take the responsibility, and force it upon them. You can only get so many chances in 2016 to 2025. I know in the past, we've done provisions of, I don't know, taking resources away and all that. I don't know if we have to get through that. But I'm hoping that with this measure, as proffered, that it is sending a message that this plan is critical, it's important. And like my good colleague from Jigoo always says, "Get it done." So I stand and rise in support of this measure. And I thank the good Speaker for proffering this. And I give my full support. So thank you, Mr. Speaker, for giving me the opportunity to speak on this measure, as proffered by my brother from Baragada, Speaker Frank Blas. Sisus Maasi. Sijus Massey.
Sijus Massey, ranking member, Senator Tina Muny Barnes. At this time, I'll recognize Senator Shelly Cabo.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, and Hava Deen Buenos. Bill 66-38COR formally establishes the Guam Comprehensive Emergency Management Plan, or GCEMP, as a statutory requirement. This plan provides guidelines for emergency response, preparedness, and recovery operations in case of natural disasters, technological hazards, or human-caused crises. And this is a reason, the very reason why I rise today in strong support, Mr. Speaker, of the amended version of Bill Number 66-38COR. Because at its core, this bill is about being prepared, not just in word, but in action. The intent of this measure is to ensure that Guam's emergency management system is not a reactionary tool pulled from a shelf after a crisis, but a living, practiced framework embedded in our government operations year-round. We know too well, from the experiences of Typhoon Maor and the other past disasters, that even with the best intentions, the absence of regular review, coordination, and real-time exercises can lead to delays, confusion, and preventable hardship for our people. This bill moves, this bill moves us from that reactive posture to a culture of preparedness. By codifying the Guam Comprehensive Emergency Management Plan, we are institutionalizing a comprehensive, all-hazards strategy that includes not just emergency response, but also continuity of operations, communications protocols, resource coordination, and a vital integration of federal and local efforts. More importantly, the bill mandates annual reviews and exercises of the plan, along with the requirement to report lessons learned and recommended improvements to both the executive and legislative branches. This ensures that the plan is constantly evolving based on real-world scenarios and that we are holding ourselves accountable to the standard of readiness and our people deserve. The outcome of this legislation, if faithfully implemented, will be a government that moves faster, communicates better, coordinates more efficiently, and protects lives and infrastructures with greater efficiency. It will mean that agencies are not working in silos, but as part of a unified response system that is familiar with its roles, capable in its execution, and resourced for success. In essence, this bill is not just a policy document, it is a commitment, a commitment to our families, our villages, and our future, that when the next disaster strikes, we will not be scrambling. We will be ready, we will be prepared. So I urge my colleagues to support this measure, not only for what it requires today, but for the resilience it builds for all the tomorrows ahead. Let us act with urgency now so we are never caught unprepared again. I would like to thank the good author of this bill for putting it together, good, our speaker from Baragada. And I would like to ask that I be a co-sponsor of this bill. Sijus Massey, Mr. Speaker.
Sijus Massey, Senator Shelly Cabo. Anyone else on Bill 66-38? Anyone else wish to speak? Senator Joseph Augustine, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. You know what, as I read the bill, the legislative findings, 2016, while 2016, I was in the National Garden, and I was one of the, what they call the Rack Response Activity Coordinator. And you know what surprised me is that, thank you, Speaker Blas, for introducing this bill. Because being from the military side, you always plan. And it was proven during the Typhoon Maor that all they did was tabletop exercise. They exercised in their, on their desk. They should have went out there and checked the pump station, making sure we had access to water. They should have went out there and did what they should have done. But no. Sad part is that 2016. I want to first thank first the author of the bill and hope to be co-sponsor before I forget. But shame on us that the legislative has to get involved and tell them to do their job. They go to training after training after training to prepare Guam. Office of Homeland Security, Office, or Homeland, Guam Homeland Security Office of Civil Defense, tada balina nona tenegi. There's no preparedness in even in the name. But I thank the author for the bill and I fully support this bill. And again, I ask to be a co-sponsor. Let's move forward. And if they don't do it, then let's take the proactive measures by dealing with that when we start dealing in the budget. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Sijus Massey, Senator Augustine, on the bill. Is there anyone else like to speak? On the bill, Senator Jolai, you're recognized.
Sijus Massey, and I want to thank the speaker for this bill. I support it. I support the sentiments of my colleagues. I remember very clearly the mayor's responses to Typhoon Maor. And I remember very clearly when COVID-19 was raging in other countries that had not yet come to Guam. And they did begin at that time an exercise of updating the emergency plan. And I remember the meetings, but I also remember when COVID-19 came, I think that was under Linda de Norsee as the Department of Public Health. She left shortly after that, and I do not remember them citing the plan as we went through our response to that. And there were very many days of questioning where, what was the plan? What happened to the plan? And why are we doing this and why are we doing that? Is that what was the most recommended outcome from all those planning sessions? So I very much support this. I just had a couple of questions for the author or the committee chair. First of all, I would recommend, this bill requires that the civil defense is going to provide a report to the governor and the chairperson of the legislative committee on the outcome of the plan's review and exercise no later than 90 calendar days. So that the plan's review and exercise, it shall include hazards and type of exercises conducted, the shortfalls and response gaps identified, the steps taken to mitigate the shortfalls and gaps, and recommendations for executive or legislative action. And I would suggest that this be instead transmitted, or in addition, transmitted to the speaker and the chairperson. Because the speaker's office has a, by receiving these formal messages and communications, a permanent record of these types of things. And we're talking about continuity in planning and continuity in these offices. And I think it would be a good idea, because we cannot necessarily obtain records from the governor's office after a governor leaves office. Same thing in a senator's office right now. But transmittals to the speaker, they are maintained here at the legislature under messages and communications, and they've really come to be an excellent source of information over the years as to why things happened or in this situation, what gaps we still have that need to be fixed. Now, I know the Office of Homeland Security, Esther Agigee, had some concerns that that would be exposing ourselves, but I think, no. If we are exposed at this point in our own emergency response, then we all need to know about it. Hiding it is really what's bringing us these problems. We hide it until the mayors are in here telling us they can't get water tanks in their villages when the water's been off for weeks. I just don't think that that's acceptable. I don't think we should be able to put up with that anymore. And that this is exposure, transparency is going to fix it. I don't think they're going to be exposing any military security things in this. But, and I just think, because we are behind and because we need to quickly come to solutions, that would be my suggestion. And maybe I'll just make that amendment right now, if the speaker view would allow it, that it not being in writing, that where it says on page five, it says, Maga Hagan Guahan, and the chairperson of the legislative committee, I would, I would like to add, and the speaker and the chairperson.
On the amendment, first of all, with the oversight chair and the speaker, maybe you'll speak on the amendment, or do you want to address what's been brought up? Or you want to speak on the amendment? Okay, so on the amendment, is everybody okay with it not being in writing? Seems simple enough. So yes, on the amendment proffered by Senator Jolai, anyone wish to speak on that amendment? Anyone wish to speak on the amendment? Okay, so are there any objections to the amendment? Are there any objections to the amendment? Amendment carries.
Sijus Massey, colleagues, and speaker. And so I also wanted to ask, so at the hearing, they talked about, or the fiscal note says something about a $196,000 per annum expense or cost to do this update. And I just want to know if that's, it's, it sounds like it's a big exercise, but they sound like they're going to have to hire additional permanent employees. So I just want to know what was the end result of that? Are we, are we looking at that type of a cost or not for this type of planning and exercise?
Speaker Blas, do you yield the question?
Appreciate the question, yes. You know, first of the $196,000 was basically a estimate, if you will, based on previous exercises. That is funded by the programs provided to provide emergency management through the Emergency Management Forums GRAP program and the Homeland Security GRAP program. Then there's a third program, which is basically your cybersecurity GRAP program, that provides you funding necessary to conduct these exercises. So that's where that money comes from. You know, what complicates this is because while we have the money to be able to do this, not only did we not do it, but we spent that money elsewhere, which causes another issue. That isn't, you know, not addressed in this bill will be addressed actually in your committee. But that's what, the 196 was the average cost for the exercises that is funded by the programs available. I think the chairman as well has got a...
So I'm going to go ahead and recognize the chair of the committee as well to add some comment to that. Senator Gumtata, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And, Mr. Speaker, the, when we think about the cost, it could be either a full-scale exercise, it could be even a tabletop exercise. Some of these aren't big in terms of output, meaning that in a full-scale exercise, you're putting, you're deploying the entirety of the government of Guam out onto a roadway or the like. So it really, it depends on what the, what is the outcome that we are trying to accomplish in these particular exercises. And you don't need to do a full-scale exercise, you can do a tabletop at certain emerging type of issues like cybersecurity. But yeah, it just, it runs the range in terms of what we're trying to accomplish in them.
Thank you. And I just want to bring that up because I know they questioned that at the public hearing, and I'm grateful that, so hopefully that's resolved and that we are not creating a hundred, an additional $196,000 liability, that that is something that's already, should be taken care of. And before I get to my next question, it just reminds me of something, and I just wanted to do a little bit of a shout out, I guess. So I have a brother that works for the Army Corps of Engineers, and he participated in a tabletop study with the forestry division at Department of Ag and the fire department. And he said he was extremely impressed by the Department of Agriculture's response to fires and their coordination with the Guam Fire Department. And I was very grateful because we have seen so many fires going on, and they have, they are the only ones, these Department of Ag, who can get into those fires inside. And so, but to hear that there's good coordination with the fire department, of course, things could be better. They need water sources, it's really. But I'm just very grateful to hear good comments like that about our hard-working agencies, especially right now where we can see for ourselves the threats that they are under and how they risk their lives for these, this type of work. So my final question is really, maybe to the committee chair, is if he would yield, I see that the committee adopted amendments to the bill from, mostly from the civil defense. Are there any that were not adopted and is there any reason why not?
Committee chair, Senator Gumtata, do you yield to the question?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Yes, we have another bill that I authored to create a response plan. There was an ask about the definition of the administrator to kind of once and for all set the, what would be, who would head what. And so in that other measure, we're using that platform to be able to do that. And that's something that in the committee, we felt that would be more appropriate. In this case, this is mainly on the, it's on the plan and with the creation of a fund would be a, perhaps, we thought would be the best.
Sijus Massey, that makes sense. And I noticed that that was also a concern of the Homeland Security Office, so setting those out in another bill is appropriate. So I'm grateful and thank you for the bill, and I support this bill. Sijus Massey.
Thank you, Senator Jolai. On the bill, anyone else wish to speak on the bill? Senator Chris Burnett, you're recognized.
Good morning, Sijus, Mr. Speaker, and good morning to the people of Guam watching. Sijus Massey, and Buenos Aires. Definitely rise in support of the bill and have enjoyed the discussion here this morning. And, you know, between the oversight chair of the committee and the good speaker, I think there's a lot of experience when it comes to emergency response and emergency management. And you know, I'm going to quote one of my favorite board members, Mariga Terris, tada plan, let's if land. And I think we've seen that firsthand, you know, going back to the pandemic. I think that's where I first started getting on the governor's nerves, is when we would have these press conferences and, you know, we'd add a lot of questions because it was really almost, I mean, you know, no one ever been through a pandemic like that before, but there were just a lot of decisions made and then reversed. And, you know, as being a member of the media with my good friend, Senator Solis Metanani, we were tasked with having to disseminate and put information out to the public. And I'll tell you, in the midst of a crisis, it's not a good practice to rescind and replace. And I think that's what really led to a lot of anxiety and frustration during the pandemic, was, you know, we would announce things, for example, there was one idea they had where they were going to put letters on the cars and, you know, these certain cars, a certain letters could go out on certain days. And so we had spent a good amount of time talking about this plan, only to have them eventually yank it. And, you know, granted, it was a pandemic and things were, what was that phrase they loved to use? Rapidly evolving every day. But I think we also kind of saw the, and I don't want to say lack of planning because I don't want to step on, there's a lot of great people who work in this, in the fields that respond to these emergencies. But, you know, kind of talking with some of the older folks and some of the folks with institutional knowledge, and I think that, you know, the speaker would agree, and I think that's why we're discussing this bill, is I don't know if there's been like a collective forgetting of how we respond to emergencies, you know? There are many in these industries, for lack of a better term, who say that this is how we do it. But then, you know, when you see the response... But then, you know, when you see the responds, it doesn't always add up. And when you have good people like Mayor Jesse Alec, who's very experienced, right, as a public servant, who has responded to numerous, you know, emergencies. When he comes in here and he's frustrated and he's raising his voice and he's talking about, you know, something as simple as getting water and commodities out to our people, I think, you know, definitely shows that we have a problem. But we also hear from different agencies in the government of Guam. You know, we just had Typhoon Moar and just the 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 applications for FEMA. It just kind of seems like we've lost sight of those things. And we're just not hearing to the same level what we used to hear when there are emergencies before, right? You'd always hear about these big FEMA reimbursements coming down. And I'll just only speak with the Guam Department of Education. Like, I'm kind of surprised that we haven't seen more FEMA reimbursement. So I'm not sure if that's got anything to do with the plan. But what I do love about this plan is that it was appended to the bill so that, you know, we as a legislature can amend or update the plan as we see fit. And I think that's a great way for us to be active and be engaged. And, you know, the policy of how we respond to emergencies, whether they're manmade or or natural. So I rise in support of the bill and I want to thank the good speaker from Baragada as well as the chair of the committee for their insight and experience relative to these issues. And Sidozmasi, Mr. Speaker, for the opportunity to rise in support of the measure.
Sidozmasi, Senator Chris Barnett, on the bill, anyone else wish to speak on the bill? On the bill, anyone else wish to speak on the bill? Senator Duñez, recognized.
Sidozmasi, Mr. Speaker. I certainly rise in full support of Bill 66-38 and I thank the good speaker for introducing it. Frankly speaking, and I can say to Frank, our speaker, even he probably thinks, man, what took us so long to do this one? And I say that because my first introduction to Homeland Security and civil defense was under Speaker Frank's leadership and a good friend of ours that we know very well, Chuck Ada. And several instances to where I got to find out their leadership skills and why you don't arrive late to a RAC meeting as our good friend Senator Sinagastin said, I really, you know, that was my first introduction to the awesome responsibility that civil defense and homeland security has. As you know, Mr. Speaker, you even ended up serving during our time under the Comanche administration. Between that and the and the Calvo administration, we had particularly in the Comanche administration, we had a lot of storms. And so we certainly, whether they were big or small, we certainly were constantly having to go and see at the time, you know, our senior manager, Frank Gloss Jr., as well as Chuck Ada and the rest of the team. And I got to say that my experience during that time was really nothing but professionalism all throughout law enforcement, chiefs of police, chief of, you know, chief here, chief there. I mean, that room was packed every time we had a storm to make sure we secured our agencies and then we exercised going out in the community and and doing what we had prepared for. One thing, Mr. Speaker, that I remember vividly is going through a tabletop exercise under Frank's leadership for a pandemic. And I tell you, you know, they had video presentations of mock setups of what the community would look like, how news would be reporting. And this is when I first learned the term worried well. I had heard that several times, but I didn't know what that meant. And it's really, Mr. Speaker, a term that describes that when there is a pandemic, when there's an emergency that's so widespread, people who are even okay think they're not okay because the situation is so awesome and so overwhelming. And so for that reason, Mr. Speaker, it is so important just from managing an emergency, one of the first thing is is to manage the population and to get information out in a timely manner that's coordinated and 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 very, very well organized and and information that's adequate and correct so that you can deal with the emergency at hand in front of you and not deal with the mounting issue of crowd control and different things that people tend to do, like rushing to supermarkets, emptying the shelves. I mean, that's the whole thing of what we experienced. And I got to tell you, in the beginning, I thought, yeah. And then as I started watching all those presentations and I saw the training that they were giving us, like, this is real. This has happened and can happen and will happen in the future. And then it did. And so a lot of the comments and things that have been talked about today, you know, I don't want to point fingers. I'm not saying we were perfect during that time. I thought we were pretty darn good. But the fact is, is that you got to be damn good. And the fact is, is that that's absolutely why this bill is so important that on an annual basis, there's no question about it, this exercise goes through. And I agree with our good friend from Jiggle, Senator Sinagastin, that, you know, tabletop is good, but getting out there in the field and actually going to the wells just to check it out, working with our autonomous agencies and others on an annual basis, you know, that we stress the system and test the system is really something that I think is what is what the speaker is trying to bring to the table here that it's not enough to just continue to rack up miles, going to trainings time and time again, no matter where, encones, you know, to to train and even regionally. But, you know, we got to train here too. And we got to train in real life situations. And I think that's exactly what this this presentation, you know, puts forward. You know, it was you, Mr. Speaker, just several weeks ago. And I'll close with this. I mean, I wonder what a tabletop exercise would have been like if when they were conducting it, they realized that they hadn't paid their contractor for the DLAN. How how would you get that information out? How would you do what you needed to do? And you would have probably realized if you were doing a real life mockup that you hadn't paid your DLAN. I mean, if that was just one thing that we accomplished with this very important piece of legislation, can you imagine all the things down the line? Like when Chuck used to walk around and do his military inspection of all the vehicles and all the staff would be standing at attention. I think it's an added trait. And 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 just the way that operations, you know, should run. And so, Mr. Speaker, I think this is absolutely timely. Like I said, it's we all got to own whatever we got to own during our time, good accomplishments, moderate accomplishments and failures. That's all of our responsibility. But I want to close with this, Mr. Speaker, that it is an awesome responsibility because we can come in here and call an emergency session and deal with issues. The governor can call her cabinet in immediately, within a moment's notice and deal with stuff. We got emergency people running around today, ambulances running around, police officers doing their job, corrections doing their job, you know, DOAG doing their job down the line, right? But when something happens where chaos ensues, it is absolutely important that you're on your game because those situations can get out of control very fast and they could easily turn into non-managed situations if we're not on our game and if we're not testing the system. So as I close, I just want to once again appreciate the work. And I know from day one, when our speaker walked in to have a cup of coffee with our public auditor, wow, we all know where we are right now. And so the issue is, is we are here now, this is on the table. And so many things that we have a responsibility of turning around need to be turned around, and this is one of the key ones. So for that, I also want to ask the speaker to be a co-sponsor of this great legislation as well. Sidozmasi, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Duñez. Any other senator like to speak on the bill? Senator Matanani, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I also rise in support of Bill 66 and would like to request that I be added to as as well as a co-sponsor because this bill, it really is about learning from the past and preparing for the future. And one of the previous speakers kind of brought me back down memory lane when he was talking about COVID-19. And at that time, I remember the whole crafting because I was in the media for almost 30 years. And the Guam Comprehensive Emergency Management Plan was was something that I recall being crafted. And right before or during the COVID-19 pandemic, I actually did an interview with the chair of this committee about the pandemic response plan, which is an annex in the emergency response plan and how at the time it wasn't being followed. And then you had the Typhoon Moar and I saw the recovery or the slow recovery. And again, there is a plan, an annex in the Guam Comprehensive Emergency Management Plan. So Typhoon Moar, COVID-19, it really shows us what happens when emergency plans aren't followed or practiced. So yes, I do support Bill 66 and would like to be added as a co-sponsor. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Sabrina Solis Matanani. Any other colleague would like to speak on the motion on the bill? Senator Parrish, you're recognized, ma'am.
Sidozmasi, Mr. Speaker. I commend the author for his persistence in ensuring that this bill moves forward. And I look forward to the implementation of this bill. I think preparedness is is very critical, especially where we live today. You know, there are so many hazards that we are aware of. And knowing what to do in those times is is critical. So I do look forward to exercises, you know, as soon as possible. I do have a question though, because I was looking at the previous bill in regards to there was one part in the bill, this bill, that states that amendments to the plan does not require legislative approval, but shall be approved by the governor of Guam. And so I guess it's a question to the author of the, I guess, the purpose for that. I mean, I understand emergencies are, you know, I understand during emergency response, there's no time for the legislature to step in. But, you know, considering there was some issues in during COVID-19, you know, where there was questions of overstepping of power and such. And, you know, I guess perhaps, you know, how do we allay those concerns too as well? Thank you.
Thank you very much, Fran. I will you to the question. Thank you very much for it. And as fluid and dynamic as the plan is going to be, your plan and changes to the plan can happen almost on a very regular basis that would require that it is necessary to implement now and cannot wait for a legislative approval process in this thing. And that it gets into the weeds of the legislature, then taking over the role of the executive branch. And we have to separate those powers so that we understand that it is their responsibility to be able to do this. I think with regard to any appropriation, there's obviously any money, any time it's money, money is needed or additional resources outside of what is available to them through the executive branch, then it can come here. But for every plan and every change to the plan, to have to have legislative approval of the process would actually stymie if not even just hinder the process and and the action necessary to be able to 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 respond to an incident. I hope that answers your question.
Does that answer your question, Senator?
Yes, it does. Thank you. But I do want to say that, and I do appreciate the items that are listed here as part of the plan. So emergency powers of the office of the governor, emergency declaration process, responders, communications, and all of these things we can I I can relate to during the time of COVID, how important all of these elements are. And so I do look forward to the plan and in the update especially, considering, you know, the time that it was created, perhaps, you know, we weren't even thinking of a pandemic, that type of of type of hazard as much as we were thinking about natural disasters. So, you know, we're looking at cybersecurity issues too. So there definitely is a need to update and to expand this this plan and also to learn from our our past on how we can prove and, you know, prevent any kind of a discord so that everybody's unified. And I think part of it is everyone has to exercise it too. So I look forward to that. And so thank you for this opportunity to to register my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Parrish. Any other colleague who'd like to speak on?
And what this legislation proposes, what it'll do is ensure that our planning is not to fail and that we will can we will not fail to plan. That's what this is for. Because the stark reality is with regard to a natural or manmade disaster, they only have to be successful once. And that's what we're up against. I want, again, I don't want to belabor all the failures that have occurred as a result of not not just practicing the plan, but most of us even unrecognizing that there's plan. This will make sure that this plan continues to remain in the forefront of one of the very basic functions of government as we know it, to protect its people. And if we can't do that as a government, we have failed. So with that, Mr. Chair, Mr. Speaker, I would like to be able to add additional sponsors to the bill. So I'd like to make an amendment to include the following senators. Obviously, good Senator, the chairman of the committee, Senator Sean Gomitata. Well, he didn't, although he didn't speak, and I know that he was because he made an integral part of this when I when I first said, and he can't speak right now because he's got a sore throat. Senator Vince Borha. Obviously, you, Mr. Vice Speaker, Senator V. Anthonyada, Senator Joe Sinagastin, Senator Tina Munya-Barnes, Senator Shelley V. Cabo, Senator Chris M. Duñez, Senator Chris Barnett, Senator Sabrina, Sabina Flores, Senator Sabrina Solis Matanani, Senator Jesse Luhon. And, you know, I, you know, Mrs. Speaker, we have to abide by the rules that we have in the body. So I would just end by saying all senators present, as I am presenting this amendment, to be co-sponsors to the bill.
There's an amendment to add all senators present as co-sponsors to Bill 66-38. Any objections? There being none.
Thank you. With that, Mr. Speaker, I then renew my motion to move Bill 66-38 COR as amended by the Committee on Public Safety, Emergency Management and Guam National Guard and further amended on the floor to the third reading.
There's a motion to move Bill 66-38 as amended and further amended on the floor to the third reading. Any objections? There being none.
Thank you, sir.
Senator Tina Rose Munya-Barnes, you're recognized on Bill number 95-38 COR.
Sidozmasi, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I move that Bill number 95-38 COR is amended by the Committee on Mr. Speaker, I move that Bill Number 95-38 COR is amended by the Committee on Health and Veterans Affairs as introduced by myself, Tina Rose Munya-Barnes, Senator Joseph Augustine, Senator Vincent A. V. Boran, Vice Speaker V. Anthony Ada, which is an act to amend Section 25101A of Chapter 25, Title 10, Guam Code annotated, and Section 2402C of Chapter 2, Title 10, Guam Code annotated, and to add a new Section 2402.1 to Chapter 2 of Title 10, Guam Code annotated. And this is relative to allowing childcare facilities to operate as intergenerational daycare centers. To the third reading, and can I speak on it, sir?
Yes, I will allow you to speak on it.
Thank you. Sidoos Masi, Mr. Speaker, and I want to give at this time special thanks. I hope they're listening to the Guam Women's Chamber, especially to Ms. Lani Tamong Dong and Tiffany Nkoku for bringing this matter to my attention, for their support and their advocacy and their commitment to providing quality care to our children and our seniors. And, Mr. Speaker, you were there at that meeting with several other colleagues like Senators Augustine when, when these issues were coming to play. But, Mr. Speaker, Bill Number 95 is a reflection of what I think are universal priorities for us in the Guam Legislature. It supports small businesses and working families. It promotes our Chamorro and Island values for raising our kids and respecting our elders. And it streamlines regulations so this idea can become a reality quicker without ignoring valid health and safety concerns. Specifically, this bill updates licensing laws for childcare facilities by including a new type, intergenerational daycare centers. Mr. Speaker, I want to share with you that Guam is not the first place in the nation to consider this concept. In fact, in fact, do you want me to continue, Mr. Speaker? Yes. In fact, a 2023 study published by the National Institute of Health focused on the benefits and challenges of expanding intergenerational daycares in Austin, Texas. The study concludes that this model has individual, organizational, and societal benefits. The researchers of this study interviewed seniors participating in Austin's first intergenerational daycares, and they touted the benefits of sharing knowledge with children, with the children enrolled, whether it be creative skills in art class or family recipes and cooking tips. The children interviewed said they enjoyed intergenerational activities outdoors where they planted vegetables and fruits with seniors and then used the produce later in the year to make salads together. But just like other jurisdictions, Mr. Speaker, Bill 95 recognizes that safety measures must be in place to protect both the young and the older people enrolled, population groups we know to be at risk of disease and abuse. So, Mr. Speaker, this measure gives the Department of Public Health and Social Services 60 days to draft rules and regulations to implement this new license. But it sets minimum standards, I believe, will offer peace of mind to the families of both the children and seniors going to these daycares. These include certified staff in both elder care and childcare, age-appropriate, separate and shared spaces, evidence-based educational and care programming, emergency health nutritional care protocols, prohibition of convicts from employment or entry and admission interviews for adult participants and their families. That's basically what we're trying to accomplish with Bill 95, Mr. Speaker. I literally want to take the time to thank the Committee on Health, the chairman, for marking up this bill to reflect testimony received during its public hearing, primarily from the Department of Public Health and Social Services. So Senator Sabrina Sidoos Masi, I want to share on the bill, based on the mark of the First Amendment, begins on subsection seven on page four, and it expands the crimes that would make a senior ineligible for this new type of daycare services. And as requested by Public Health and the Bureau of Women's Affairs, these crimes will now include sex offenses, public indecency, family violence, domestic violence, child abuse, possessing or dealing illegal drugs, illegal possession or use of guns, and those on the Sex Offender Registry. The next amendment, Mr. Speaker, is found on page five, subsection B, and it gives the Department of Public Health and Social Services more time on the rules and regulations for this industry and clarifies that the 90 days we are proposing is to give them is just, again, just to draft the rules and regulations, not to complete the entire AAA process. So they can have more than the 90 days to hold hearings, get the AG and the governor's review complete, and then bring the draft back to us for final consideration. The timeline we are, the timeline we are mandating is only, is only to draft the rules. Again, Mr. Speaker, I believe this bill will create a new industry, needed industry here on Guam, and I thank my co-sponsors for their support. And before we end the debate, I would like to follow through with my commitment to add more of our members to this bill. But in the meantime, I will ask my colleagues to join us and help us get this effort over the finish line. But I still want to say in the beginning, as I, as I promised, that I'd like to add the chairman on, on health, Senator Sabrina Salas-Mattonani, and Senator Sean Gomitato, who asked to be in. And it was also Senator Shelley Cabo at the hearing who asked to be there. So those are the three first added, and, and then if anyone would like to get on before I close, I would be honored. So on that motion first, Mr. Chair, and thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak in support of this new industry for our community that has seen many, many, many successes in our nation and even other countries like New Zealand and Japan and other areas that this program is a good program. Sidoos Masi.
Thank you, ma'am. So on the motion to, first off, to include Senators Sabrina Salas-Mattonani, Sean Gomitato, and Shelley Cabo as co-sponsors. Any objections? No objections, so ordered. With regard to the bill, any senator wishing to speak on the bill? Any senator wishing to speak on the bill? Ma'am? Okay, the good senator from Tel Aviv, who you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I was looking around going, hey, what else is going to get up and talk? Well, I do rise in support of Bill 95-38. Mr. Speaker, intergenerational daycare centers are an innovation that address two important societal challenges, the continuing need for childcare and the emerging demand for older adult supportive services that help them remain independent. Mr. Speaker, if passed by this body, Guam will soon be able to see these facilities legally provide care and specialized resources and activities for both older adults and children in one singular location. I'm pretty excited, Mr. Speaker, that an intergenerational daycare center really could be a place where older adults and children spend their days while receiving ongoing services and programming at the same site and interact through planned and informal activities. I have learned throughout the, this particular policy creation process that by combining services and spaces in this manner, potentially serving adults, youth, and young children, it can have significant efficiencies. Sharing spaces such as kitchen and dining areas and resources such as delivery and janitorial services saves money, lowering costs to families. Even at a time when Gov. Guam is facing serious fiscal challenges, there could be some potential savings here with this particular activity, especially in these areas, especially when it's meant, will be met some level of mandate. An intergenerational shared site promotes cost efficiency also in terms of staff recruitment and training and access to a wider range of fundraising opportunities than what a single-generation daycare center can access. Intergenerational daycare centers address major community challenges, including limited accessible and affordable healthcare for older adults, affordability issues in both adult care and childcare, and institutional age segregation due to systems being designed only to serve one generation and exclude the other that can lead to ageism and negatively impact older adults and children. In light of these advantages, Mr. Speaker, places across America are increasingly recognizing opportunities for the use of intergenerational daycare centers. Our Ila Manumco today are at particular risk of social isolation. I see it in my family on a daily. This condition significantly affects their overall health. On the flip side, social involvement can be extremely advantageous. In this context, intergenerational programs improve interactions between different ages. Mr. Speaker, with less than 200 of these intergenerational daycare centers established across America as of 2021, I appreciate that Bill 95 requires the development of rules and regulations, which will be needed to support this non-traditional model of daycare within a group setting. I know we're looking at 60 days, Mr. Speaker, but even the community is saying, hey, we could help write this even sooner. I think they're ready to go today. Also, I'm confident that the legislation will help those relevant stakeholders to consider the successes and the challenges experienced by jurisdictions across America that have developed intergenerational daycare centers, including cost-sharing strategies and additional policies aimed at protecting the health and safety of all participants and staff. Mr. Speaker, I extend my gratitude to those individuals, the entrepreneurs, who worked hard to introduce and encourage acceptance by our community of this non-traditional model of daycare for children and elderly citizens. In my early going here in this body, Mr. Speaker, that public hearing, I really did learn a lot. I want to thank them for wanting to do more for our children and our Manumco and for their desire to support working families as they do their best to care and provide for their young children and their aging parents. Some of them were in attendance at that public hearing. And above all, for investing and believing in Guam. And I want to thank the author for her work on this measure and again, thank her as well for adding me as a co-sponsor to this measure. Thank you, Mr. Speaker, for the time today.
You're very welcome. On the bill, on the bill, any good senator from Tel Aviv, sir, you're recognized.
Sidoos Masi, Mr. Speaker, and I certainly rise in support of this legislation. You know, Mr. Speaker, as I sat and listened to the retiring speaker, the memories that were going through my mind were, as a young person, I have to say that so many things that I learned in my life were not necessarily always in the school setting. They were in the times that I spent with my uncles, my aunties, my older cousins, and individuals that I grew up with in a very large family. I come from a family of eight. I think in my father's family of all 11, 10 siblings, brothers and sisters, I don't think there's a family that's smaller than ours, really, eight and all the way up to 14. So you can imagine what it was like for me to grow up in that environment. In fact, I was so close to one of the families, they pretty much adopted me. And every time I comes to a coconut, every time I make fish kelleguin, every time I do dry meat with other family members, it always takes me back to those fundamentals that I learned as a young Chamorro, growing up here. I don't even, I think the only thing I learned in school, other than language and for Chamorro Week, how to make coconut candy. As far as the staples of Chamorro food, it was always from my aunties and my uncles and my Manumco, whether it was preparing for a party outside in the outside kitchen and all the preparation that took place, or there was just daily life of living, you know, being in relatives' homes, you know, pretty much the majority of the time when we weren't outside playing or going to school. So I see this really as a creative way and also a recognition, Mr. Speaker, that times have changed quite a bit. You know, I can say that in our family, between my wife and I and, and others and my, you know, brothers and sisters, you know, there are elderly that require care and that, you know, probably could use getting out and about and having some daycare opportunities while they interact with young people. So I think that this is not only unique, not only representative of our culture and who we are, but also a recognition of the times that with busy families, husband and wife, whatever, whoever is the head of household, and even the generations below that, having a lot of duty and responsibility, some holding down multiple jobs. And the reality is, is that simple daycare for our Manumco and elderly is taking place every day. It just matters on who house, which house they're going to or who's going to go to the house where they stay. So I think that this is a reality and a way to address the, the reality of today. And, you know, we know down the line that we hope through other legislation that we've introduced that assisted living facilities and things will come online. But in the meantime, I really believe that particularly during the day, there is this need, and how better to pair it than to pair the two needs to maybe allow for some of those experiences that I had as a young person to enrich the lives of young people and to maybe keep our older people younger. So perhaps that will be the outcome of this legislation. I'm very happy to see, of course, that public health and all the regulations that will be promulgated will put into play. The, of course, you know, there's always risk in everything as well. So I know that that's been addressed in this legislation. So I think as this proceeds through the process, I believe it's going to be a good outcome and something that enriches our community. So for that reason, I rise in support of this important legislation. Sidoos Masi, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator. On the bill, are there any senators wishing to speak on the bill? Good senator from Jigul?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. You know, I'm a co-sponsor of the bill, so I'm in full support of the bill. But you know, when, when the author first called me and said, I'm going to introduce an intergenerational, you know, daycare, I said, you know, I teased something along this morning, I said, Lana, this is like what we're at here today, you know, we're intergenerational. But you know, one of the beauties about this, this program is that we're on Guam. Guam is so small. Many of us are related. And the beauty is that when, when the Manumco are there with the children there, the first one says, ay, boy, it's the good. It becomes a, you know, it takes the community to raise a child. And one of the beauties of these kind of daycares is going to help and promote and keep the Manumco feeling young. So same people, we're all going to feel that, for some of us sooner than most. But with that, we'll just move on with that, and I support this bill. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for the truthfulness, Mr. Senator. Any other senator wishing to speak on the bill? Any other senators wishing to speak? Good senator from Baragada, ma'am, you can speak, yes. Baragada, I said.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I'll be honest, in the beginning, I had reservations towards this bill, but going through the process, hearing markup, and tightening it allowed my perception to understand the full intent and context of this bill. Hence, today, I rise in strong support of the amendment version of Bill Number 95-38, a measure that advances a vision of care rooted deeply in the traditions and values of our island community. This legislation affirms that care is not only about service, it is about relationships, interconnection, and dignity across generations. By authorizing intergenerational daycare centers, we give our people a path to preserve cultural identity, foster meaningful human connection, and support both our manhoben and our manomko in environments that reflect our values. I care for both demographics because I'm the oversight chair for both youth and manomko. So this is a no-brainer for me, for my office, to support. Throughout their history, families in Guam have depended on the wisdom of our elders and the energy of our youth. Homes where grandparents care for grandchildren, where young people learn language, manners, and history from their elders, these are not novelties in our culture, they are foundational. This bill, this very bill seeks to translate that tradition into a regulated model of care that is safe, inclusive, and enriching for all participants. The amended version before us today is a product of collaboration, testimony, and careful reflection. It incorporates critical safeguards to protect our most vulnerable by expanding the list of offenses that disqualify individuals from employment or presence in these facilities. It provides DPHSS with the proper authority and a realistic timeline to craft rules that are both effective and enforceable. And it strengthens the structural integrity of the bill to ensure that this new model of care is not only visionary, but as well as practical. We heard moving stories during the public hearing, stories from educators, caregivers, health professionals, and community members who have witnessed firsthand the joy and healing that happens when generations are brought together. We heard about elders who feel renewed when surrounded by children, and children who gain empathy, patience, and confidence from daily interactions with adult, older adults. These are the kinds of experiences that define community. These are the outcomes we should strive for. So as we look for policies that reflect who we are and what we want for our future, this bill stands as an opportunity to lead with compassion and cultural integrity. It shows that public policy can be both innovative and respectful of our heritage. I commend the sponsor for this bill for their leadership, and I thank the Committee on Health and Veterans Affairs for their work in strengthening this measure. I urge my colleagues to join me in supporting its passage so that we can move forward in building a Guam where care is collaborative, where our elders are honored, and where our children can grow up in the presence of those who carry our stories. Sidosmasi, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator. On the bill, any other senator wishing to speak on the bill? Ma'am, you have the floor again.
Sidosmasi, Mr. Speaker, Mr. Speaker, the concept enshrined in Bill 95 isn't new to us on Guam or in the Pacific. Certainly, many of us have grown up in homes where nana and tata are just as present as mom and dad, where young adults keep their grandparents company and help out with the household chores. I know the good senator from Agania, my primo Chris, talked about some stories there earlier. We, I want to say, and we know the benefits to this type of family life. Those in our younger generations learn from the wisdom of their elders, and those who are living in their silver and golden years have the comfort of knowing their minds and bodies are being kept active and protected by loved ones. Allowing intergenerational daycares to operate on Guam will bring this treasured approach to family life to a broader group of people, those who aren't lucky enough to have a nana, a tata to learn from, and those who don't have grandchildren to keep them active. Mr. Speaker, according to the 2023 study I mentioned in my opening statement, this model of care can also potentially drive down costs for parents and adult children seeking care for their kids or elders. But I think the best-selling point was shared by Mrs. Lani Tamandung, and to paraphrase her wise words for the committee, our famagoan are naturally curious, and our manomko are naturally nurturing. Let's leverage the curiosity of children and the encouragement of our seniors to build a better model of care for both. Let's support small businesses who cannot move forward without government action, and let's help working families who need qualified quality of care for their loved ones. Let's say yes to intergenerational daycare centers. Tamandung, Sidosmasi, Mr. Speaker, for giving me the opportunity to share this bill with my colleagues, I hope all my colleagues put the same, and if anyone else would like to be a sponsor, I more and welcome that at this time. Senator Chris Duñez, anybody else? If not, as Speaker, Senator Chris Barnett, and I must give him kudos because I know that he was working earlier with the chamber, and I know that there were some concerns in the past, and when it came to me, I said I would share it. So thank you for giving that. Senator Barnett, thank you. Senator Chris, Senator Barnett, Senator Perez, and if there's nobody else, Senator Jesse Lahon, and Vice Speaker Adams already on. Thank you. Oh, Speaker, you, I did mention you. So with that, Mr. Speaker, Sidosmasi.
On the motion to add other senators to sponsors, Senator Jess Lahon, Senator Chris Duñez, Senator Chris Barnett, myself, Senator Sabina Perez. How's that tell? Yeah, everybody? Okay, on the motion.
And yeah, Senator Matanani is already on.
Oh, she was already, and the first one.
And Senator Will Parkinson.
Ma'am, it had the signing rule said it has to be by people that are here.
Okay, thank you, sir. Respect that.
Thank you. Okay, on the motion to add a new senator, more senators to his co-sponsors, any objection? No objections, so ordered.
And Mr. Chair, if I may, I'd like to move 95-38 as amended to the third reading voting file.
On the motion, are there to move the bill to third reading? No objections, so ordered. Bill 50-38COR. Senator Barnett, you recognize, sir?
Sidosmasi, Mr. Speaker, for the opportunity, I'd like to place Bill Number 50-38COR as amended by the Committee on Economic Investment, Military Buildup, Regional Relations, Technology, Regulatory Affairs, Justice, Elections, and Retirement into the third reading file. I would love the opportunity to discuss it.
You have mercy.
Sidosmasi, Mr. Speaker. Bill 50-38 is just one of the measures that the 38th Guam Legislature has introduced relative to restoring the dignity for retirees who are rehired into public service in the government of Guam. I want to commend my colleagues, Senator Borja, and of course, Senator Timonia Barnes. They had introduced a measure similar to mine, and I'll kind of go over just the timeline of things. So last year, a teacher, Mrs. Avita Luhana Espinoza, had sent us an email because there had been a change in how the Guam Department of Education was dealing with teachers who were re, retired teachers who were rehired into the government of Guam. And the budget law that we passed last term contained a provision in it that barred retired, rehired teachers from accruing sick leave. And so the Guam Department of Education had been allowing these retired and rehired teachers to accrue sick leave in previous years, but you know, when we passed the budget, that language there caught the attention of GDOE, and they felt that they needed a legislative fix to remedy this situation. And so I had introduced a bill that allowed teachers to accrue sick leave. The senators, my good colleagues who I mentioned, had also introduced a similar measure. But when I introduced that bill and it made its way to the media, we started to get a lot of other retirees reaching out to our office, to include retirees at Department of Corrections, you know, Guam Police Department, numerous agencies. And come to find out, there was similar language that restricted the retired teachers, also restricted other retirees hired back into the government of Guam. And so Bill 50 really is a fix. You know, we kind of all put our heads together here in this body and determined that, hey, retired teachers deserve that sick leave, and I'll kind of get more into their reasoning. But then when we heard about other retirees, I introduced Bill 50 to kind of just, you know, cover everyone. So I want to thank Senora May Mandiola, who actually approached me late last year at a GDOE event at the Agania Shopping Center. She kind of shared some of the concerns with a lot of the retired teachers who work with the Guam Department of Education. You know, retired teachers are, they're not a young group, they're, many of them are manomko, and sometimes they catch the flu from their students. I know that Mrs. Avita had caught COVID twice from her students. But with the inability to accrue sick leave, what ends up happening is these teachers and these employees in the government of Guam who return to public service, and remember, these are very tenured, seasoned employees who have, you know, put in their time and have that institutional knowledge, very valuable to any organization, any agency. And so what would happen is when these teachers would get sick, they would be, leave without pay. You know, they'd have to take the day off because they caught the flu and they wouldn't get paid. And let's just be clear, these retirees who come back to the government of Guam, I mean, we're not talking about people who are well off. A lot of times, these retirees are coming back into government service because the cost of living, as we all know, the inflation, I mean, just, just to make ends meet, a lot of times, you know, you need a household with four to five incomes. And so a lot of these retirees, they put in their good service for the people of Guam, and they end up having to come back into government service to just kind of help their families make ends meet. And of course, a lot of the retired teachers that I talked to, they come back because, you know, they love the kids and they want to come in and they want to teach. So there are about 50 retired teachers at the Guam Department of Education, and I know that Dr. Edward Byrne from Department Administration had submitted testimony in a public hearing along the lines of, you know, we shouldn't rely heavily on retirees because we should grow a younger workforce that is robust. And you know, I agree with that, but also I agree that the retirees are providing an invaluable contribution, and they are not meant to supplant or replace any younger teachers or any regular employees hired into the government of Guam. What they're doing is they're augmenting and helping us deal with our teacher shortage, right? Because we know we have a shortage of teachers. So anytime these retirees like Senora Bobby Paulino wants to come back, Senora Avantovas, who, you know, teaches Tumouru at LBJ Elementary, Senora Joanne Brown, not the senator, it was actually a teacher named Joanne Brown who teaches at Agania Heights Elementary. All of these teachers submitted testimony in support of this Bill 50-38, which, and it's a, it's a one-pager. There we are. Two sentences, the bill is very simple. It adds a new subsection 4108.1 to Chapter 4, Title 4 GCA, to read as follows, accrual of sick leave for retirees re-employed with the government of Guam. Retirees that are authorized to continue receiving their annuity payments while being re-employed in the government of Guam shall accrue sick leave benefits in the same manner as active employees of the government of Guam. All laws, rules, regulations, with the exception of the lump-sum payouts of sick leave regarding the accrual use and disposition of sick leave, shall apply to retired employees who are rehired in the government of Guam. And you know, specifically in the case of the teachers, because I think Mr. Byrne had also raised a point about these retirees continuing to receive their annuity payments. Let me just tell you what it's like for, and I'll just speak specifically to the GDOE retired teachers. You know, every year, they have to reapply for their job, and even if they left the Guam Department of Education as a teacher four or teacher three, they are rehired back in at the lowest step. So they're hired back in at the lowest step because they're receiving their annuity payments. So in my opinion, it's kind of like to offset the fact that they're receiving their retirement, but they have made a conscious decision to rejoin the government of Guam to provide much-needed, you know, critical assistance. The Personnel Services Administrator for the Guam Department of Education also testified in support of the bill. The bill, and Catherine Ada writes, "The bill represents a crucial step in strengthening our educational system by ensuring that certified retirees have the necessary incentives to re-enter the classroom." She urges the legislature to pass Bill 50-38COR to support our students, our educators, and the future of public education on Guam. We also received favorable support from Mrs. Mary Nolte, who's a retired special education teacher. She writes, "I hold certifications in both SPED K-12, ESL K-12, and if earned sick leave was available to retirees." She feels like it resolves an injustice that was maybe inadvertently created in the budget bill. Because you know, one thing I kind of was scratching my head about was, in years prior to this fiscal year that we're just getting over, DOE was granting the sick leave to the retirees, but when I went back into those respective budgets and I read the language, it was the same language as the last budget bill we passed. So that prohibition has been in place, but for whatever reason, GDOE was granting that sick leave until the most recent budget bill. So the bill amends a section that allows the retirees to accrue that sick leave, and I humbly ask for the support of my colleagues to push this measure through for Mrs. Avantovas, Ms. Joanne Brown, Mrs. Mary Nolte, and also Mr. Jerry Paulino, who all provided testimony in support of this. And you know, again, these retirees, they're coming back because they love what they do, whether it's in the Guam Department of Education or the Department of Corrections. Let's, please restore this dignity, you know, it's not a, it's not a necessarily a financial incentive that we're providing to these retirees. But if you look at the scenario in the Guam Department of Education, for example, you could have a teacher who's not a retiree who could get sick, they get that sick leave, but in the classroom next door, if you have, you know, Senora Ivan, for example, gets sick, she's just absent without pay because she's not able to accrue that sick leave. So I think it's dignified, and I think it's necessary to really show that deference to a lot of our elderly who come back into public service and to really just thank them for that. So I humbly ask the support of my colleagues for this measure, and I thank you again, Mr. Speaker, for the opportunity to speak on it.
Thank you, Senator. On the bill, ranking member from Pago Bay, you recognize? Ranking Member from Pago Bay, you recognize, ma'am?
Sidozmasi, Mr. Speaker. I promise I'll be brief in the interest of time and lunch, but I stand here and rise in support of this measure as introduced by the good Senator from Jonah, Senator Chris Barnett, and I really want to thank him for the efforts in hearing the requests from, from our retired teachers who literally want to continue to give back to our students. As you know, as he mentioned earlier, we tried to work on this effort, and now that this bill is in front of us on this session floor, I want to say I support it wholeheartedly, giving the opportunity for retired teachers who come back, at least the opportunity in case they need to go to scheduled appointments or activities that would require them to be away from the classroom, that they'd be afforded that opportunity. It's, it's the minimum required, I think it's four hours of paycheck, and I just think that it allows for our government of Guam, teacher retirees who want to double-dip and help out and give back to our students, and it just gives them the opportunity to earn sick leave equal to that of active employees. And, and I want to say that this is a good thing. Also understand the concerns that were brought up by Director Byrne and the efforts of employing all our students that have graduated, especially from our University of Guam, and we have a lot of those. We congratulate the students who graduated just this past Sunday, especially in the Education Department. I think that was the most that Guam has ever graduated. I think it was over 379 or 380 graduates, with a lot of them coming in from the Education Department. And we, we hope that all those teachers and all those students will get placed in all our government of Guam educational schools. But more importantly, we know that we have those students coming in, but we also have the retirees who don't need to be retrained, who've already taken the necessary prerequisites to teach in the classroom for our government, but, and, and are willing, are willing to give of their time. And they still are kept active with, with their knowledge and with what they can offer back to our students. So I rise in full support and of this measure, and I ask the good author from Jonah to please allow me a cosponsorship on this effort, and I appreciate him following through on this measure as I tried earlier and was not successful. Signamasi.
Thank you very much, Senator. Any other Senator wishing to speak on the bill? Good Senator from Tumuning, sir, you recognized?
Sidozmasi, Mr. Speaker, and I certainly rise in full support of Bill 50-38. That's kind of interesting because, as you know, in my family, and a certain family member of mine, all but one of the gang are educators in various levels of education. So by extension of that, I've met so many teachers along the way and other school officials. So as I've said on this floor many times, I call it my pullovers, right? So when I'm at the grocery store, this one happened to be at Yogurtland, but there was a large group of seasoned individuals sitting over there that I knew, and I wasn't getting out of there without stopping by the table. And it was, "Afa bo bag! What happened to our sick leave?" And I said, "Uh-oh, I didn't know about this one necessarily." So I said, "Can you give me a rundown? Anay, you know, we're still vibrant, we're still young, we're still teaching, we want to teach, but anay, we don't get sick leave if we get sick." I said, "Hmm, yeah, I think I remember that happened." And then I, I had known that Senator Barnett was working on it, and as well as I know that Senator Bora as well and others, and I said, "I think that one's coming up." Okay, so, Daya, we're looking forward to you supporting that. So definitely, this is out there in the, in the community. Like I said, most of those teachers in that area with my sister and her group, they're not manamko, they're seasoned. Because they're very active people, and sometimes I think they even look younger than me. So I never called them that, but they're very active, whether it's at the university level, you know, in our Department of Education, others. They, they just continue, as the author of this legislation said, "Sometimes it's for the resources, but I think most of the times it's for the love of it." You know, they did it all their life, and it's hard to let go. But, you know, it is true, you know, they're going to experience those times when they're not well, and, you know, and we're bringing them in at step one, and, and they're, they're really, you know, doing it out of the love for teaching and educating our children going forward. And, you know, so during that time when they are unwell, I think it's only fair that we allow them to be compensated, you know, with that sick leave in order to, to really just show them the due respect that they're putting in the time to continue to help where we have, we know from time to time, pretty much every time, perennial shortage of teachers. So they really do fill, fill a good gap. I'm glad that I had the chance to ask the GFT president during the hearing, and it was mentioned in the author's opening on this, that, you know, is there a danger that this, you know, is a, is a cost-savings mechanism perhaps from time to time by Department of Education? And they, they said absolutely not, due to the fact that the classified teachers and the classified teacher in the, you know, active employee is the priority of Department of Education, is the priority of GFT, and they always have the priority over that. If there are active teachers that are, that are, you know, certified and in the system or applying to the system, those are the priority, and that typically in this circumstance, most of these teachers are filling a duty and a responsibility due to shortages. And so, you know, I was very happy to hear that, knowing that our, just like our recent graduating class, those who have put the time in at UOG and other universities to, you know, get their degrees in education, you know, have that, that, that knowledge that, you know, they're, they're first in line to get a job for the education that they've received. So with all of the testimony during the public hearing, certainly, this is a very good bill, and I would also ask the sponsor if I could be a cosponsor to this very important legislation. Sidozmasi, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Senator. On the bill. Any other Senator wishing to speak on the bill? General Lady from Jonah, you recognize, ma'am?
Sidozmasi, Mr. Speaker, and I rise in support of this bill. Very good bill for a very good purpose, and for the same reasons that we have in our budget bills for several years, made an exception that retired government of Guam employees can be rehired into these critical positions. For that same reason, we should allow them to receive sick leave. The critical positions that we have allowed in our most recent budget bill include those law enforcement officers, where despite all our efforts to recruit and run new cycles, we still have vacancies, including the Department of Corrections, Guam Police Department, the firefighters, the Customs and Quarantine Agent. We also have critical employees at the Department of Revenue and Taxation, those who are doing the regulation for us, critical employees in the Department of Public Health as social workers, where we have an extreme shortage, and we're very happy that we've graduated over 30 this year at the University of Guam, through large part with the scholarships from the government of Guam and these types of working conditions where hopefully we can recruit more. But for the retired social workers, they've done such good work, but bringing them back is really critical at this point, especially to help the new social workers to, to really be able to be resilient in this type of work. Teachers, of course, as has been said, we've also allowed rehiring of retired employees at the judiciary, the public defender, and the Attorney General's Office because of the shortage of attorneys. We've also allowed it for the Mayor's Council of Guam. As you know, their employees are hired on only short-term basis, so they do not have any of these types of protections. So I'm glad, because we know that they are doing the critical work, that they are going to be able to, when they are ill, still be able to use their leave so that they can bring food for the families. So all of these critical positions, I fully support the bill that we are allowing them to, to be sick for, and to, to get leave while they're doing this critical work. Sidozmasi, and, and thank you.
Thank you very much, Senator. On the bill. Any other Senators wishing to speak on the bill? Good Senator from Tumuning, sir? Sit down. You still got two more supporters. Okay. Senator from Baragada, ma'am, you are recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I rise in full support of Bill Number 50-38-COR, because at its heart, this bill is about fairness, dignity, and strengthening our government workforce. It recognizes the vital role that our retired public servants continue to play when they return to help fill critical shortages in our agencies. Whether they are in our classrooms, our correctional facilities, or on the front lines of public safety, these retirees bring them not just experience, but a deep sense of purpose and service to our island. These retirees are the manamko, so they're dear to my heart. And as an oversight chair, this makes sense to me. The intent of this bill is simple, to ensure that when these retirees come back to serve, they are not penalized for doing so. By allowing them to accrue sick leave, just like any other government employees, we are giving them the basic protection and respect that they deserve. No one should have to choose between serving their community and forfeiting time off when they are ill or in need of care. This bill helps remove that burden. We often speak about the value of institutional knowledge and the importance of retaining skilled professionals within the government. This legislation makes that valuable actionable. It provides a practical incentive for retirees to return and to stay. And so by ensuring they are treated equitably while they support our government operations and mentor the next generation of workers. The outcome of this bill is clear, a strong, more stable government workforce, and a more respectful, supportive environment for those who continue to serve beyond retirement. I commend the efforts of those who brought this measure forward and the retirees whose service continues to make a difference. I urge my colleagues to support this bill and help ensure our, our policies reflect the gratitude and fairness our public servants deserve. Sidozmasi, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator. On the bill. General Lady from Tumuning, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I send in full support of this legislation, Bill 50-38. I even remembered that day when we had the public hearing. I just came from the dentist and was wearing a mask in fear that, you know, the, I'll start drooling on this side. But during that public hearing, actually, we didn't have anyone there to testify. However, we did reach out to Director Burns to ensure we received his testimony, and, and for the record, to let them know, the, the listening audience know that they stood in support of this, and we made sure that in the legislation, it concurred with its findings and recommendations with regards to what they put in place. And just short part of his testimony was to, that he provided, written testimony, "To ensure fairness and fiscal responsibility, we propose the following. One, retirees who must suspend their annuity should be eligible to accrue sick leave, as this provides them with a continued source of income. Number two, retirees who maintain their annuity should not accrue sick leave as they already have a financial safety net." So this was some of the recommendations that he made. We also made some changes on the, the title of the bill and placed it in Title 4, Chapter 4, thinking this was the best, the best place for it. And also received a testimony, not only from them, but from DOE Administrative Human Resources Division of DOE. Now, the legislature here has an opportunity to make whole those individuals who want to come back and continue to contribute to our island, its growth, and especially to our children. Institutional knowledge, as you all know, it's, we are losing more people retiring out than ever before, and I've mentioned this several times, in the year 2030, there'll be more children, more seniors than there are children. So the opportunity for us to make, codify this and not rely on whatever budget bill to incorporate this, unfortunately, last year, and I don't know how that got through, but we're here to make that correction by codifying it. So we don't rely on the budget bill in order to incorporate something that's very important for our community, and especially those who are willing to come back and, and, and serve. So I stand in full support, and I believe during the markup meeting, I'd asked to be a cosponsor for this legislation, so I humbly hope the sponsor will allow me to be a cosponsor. So thank you, Mr. Speaker, for the opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Senator. On the bill. Any other Senators wishing to speak on the bill? Sponsor, you are?
Sidozmasi, Mr. Speaker, for the opportunity to close on the bill. And I just really want to thank my colleagues for their overwhelming support of this, this measure, which, again, is not just for retired teachers rehired into the Guam Department of Education. This measure will cover all retirees. As the good Senator from Jonah had said, you know, every year in the budget, we put that provision in there that authorizes these different agencies to bring back retirees. And so we hear, we hear the call, and this bill hopefully will answer and provide that, that solution, really, that should have been in place the entire time. And so I want to definitely thank my colleagues who have also sent out messages to the retired teachers who, you know, helped push this measure onto the floor. And also want to thank the body for just generally supporting this dignified treatment of the retirees. You know, we see it on the federal side, they get the sick benefits when they come back, and I just think that, you know, what's good for them has got to be good for us, too. So, again, very humbled by the support for this measure, and really, really grateful and hoping for its passage and the governor's signature so that we can put this into place before the next school year starts. And these retired teachers who are coming back for school year '25, '26 will be able to avail of these sick benefits. We don't want you to get sick, but, you know, if you do, you should be able to have that sick leave available for its use. And I did, I also want to thank the committee chair for, you know, there's a lot of work, I mean, it's the two sentences, but there were some, some good things done to this bill in markup, and I do remember, she actually asked me during the markup meeting to be the first cosponsor. So if I could make a motion to add cosponsors with, starting with Senator Taidegui, Senator Chirlahi, Senator Perez, Senator Tina Munia Barnes, Senators Shelley V. Calvo, Senator Duennius as well, and I guess all Senators present, Mr. Speaker, if you would indulge me on that?
Okay, there is a motion to add all Senators present. Okay, there is a motion to add all senators present. But Senator Taita Taidegui first?
Put for what?
Okay. As cosponsors to the measure. Any objections? No objections, so ordered.
Thank you, and Sido Smasi, this time I'd like to motion to place the bill into the third reading file.
On the motion to place Bill 50-38COR as amended and further amended on the floor, to the third reading, any objections? No objections, so ordered. Okay, it is about seven minutes to 12. Why don't we go ahead and break for lunch, we'll be back here at 2:00 PM. Okay, we'll break for lunch, we'll be back here at 2:00 PM. Okay, so we are in recess. Thank you.